September ninth, two thousand and twenty five, meeting of the Springdale School Board to order. And we'd like to welcome everyone. Thank you for coming. And we would like to start with our student representative from DTSOI, Noe Juarez Escamilla. Come to the podium, and he's going to lead us in the pledge. Our September ninth, two thousand and twenty five, meeting of the Springdale School Board to order. And we'd like to welcome everyone. Thank you for coming. And we would like to start with our student representative from DTSOI, Noe Juarez Escamilla. Come to the podium, and he's going to lead us in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands,
one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Like I told you, we, instead of me reading through your sheet here and all your accomplishments, if you want to just tell us a little bit about yourself, and then if we have any questions, we'll save those for the end.
Yeah, so my name is Noe Juarez Escamilla. I've been attending Springdale Public Schools since I was in kindergarten at George Elementary. I eventually made my way to J.O. Kellyford Sixth Grade and ended up at DTSOI in Seventh Grade. And I have been there ever since. I'm a senior this year. I, after high school, I plan to go to the U of A and enroll at the College of Business they have there. And major in supply chain, either supply chain management or economics.
And you're going to have how many hours of college credit when you graduate high school?
A total of fifty-six credit hours once I go to high school. Thank you.
And I know nobody can read this from here, but this whole back page is his extracurricular activities. There's a lot.
There is a lot. So tell us a little bit about some of your favorite extracurricular activities. You have, there's probably ten on here, so what are some of your favorite ones?
One of my favorite ones is definitely being a student ambassador for DTSOI, Don Tyson School of Innovation. I, I, I became an ambassador for my school, my high school, in the Ninth Grade. And since then, I've only, my, my communication skills, my public speaking skills, and my critical thinking skills have only improved since then. It, it's always, I always like a, I always like a challenge, especially when it's a bit, a fairly large amount of adults that I have to single-handedly guide throughout the school and answer the questions. And, and, and engage with them throughout the tour.
For people that don't know what an ambassador does at SOI, tell us what that is.
Oh, yeah. So a student ambassador at DTSOI, or my high school, is essentially being a tour guide or an usher. For example, for instance, say a, a big group from the U of A comes and visits the, the school. I would be in charge of greeting them, welcoming, welcoming them into the school, and giving them a proper tour, answering any questions they have. And, yeah, overall, just engaging and making them feel welcomed. Yeah.
Are you passionate about SOI? Do you like it?
Yes. I, I really love where, where I go to school.
So what would you tell a student that is thinking about going to DTSOI?
A, a, so this is something I would tell a student that's going at, that's thinking of going into a DTSOI is to do it. Do it. Because DTSOI, it, it offers lots of pathways. We, we all know that, like, not all students are headed to college, like, that's their plan. And DTSOI understands that. They, they have classes for those students who are, want to go into the workforce, workforce after high school. And, and of course, the traditional route of going to college, I feel there's immense support. The teachers there are awesome. DTSOI does, the admin, the administration does an amazing job at hiring the correct teachers, the very supportive ones, to guide students through that process.
We met you, were you in Ninth Grade when you kind of was our guide at the DTSOI? I know we visited once, I think you were growing since.
Yes, I, yes, I believe it was in the Ninth Grade when we met. Yes.
You're doing great. It's great to see you.
Thank you.
When you're done with your career, we need you to come back and talk to us again.
Definitely, yeah. After, after I get my degree, I, I hope to establish myself here in the Northwest Arkansas area. I don't, I don't plan on leaving. I, I definitely want to give back to this community that has given so much to me.
I know you said that you were going to do either economics or supply chain?
Yes, sir.
Have you figured that out yet? Or are you still?
Um, I still haven't thoroughly figured it out. I, right now, I'm leaning more towards, towards supply chain management, since I know that the Sam Walton College of Business at the U of A is really well-known for.
I can highly recommend that. My youngest son, and I've got a daughter-in-law that both work in the supply chain world. And my youngest son, who got his masters here at the U of A, and they're paying him a ridiculous amount of money. So you can.
Yes, I will highly consider that.
If that's a big thing, then you can do it, you know?
Yes. Thank you.
Any family with you? Do you have any family here with you?
Oh, yes, I have my mom and my sister.
Are they in the room?
Oh, they're not right here in the room, yes, but, yeah, they're.
I just wanted to have them stand up if they were. Well, thank you for coming. We really appreciate you.
Thank you, guys, for.
Thank you. Okay, that brings us to our agenda for the night. Dr. Cleveland, any changes to the agenda?
No changes. I just have a couple of handouts I've provided you. I've provided you an update of all the new employees from July to May, certified classified, and hopefully work. The number of employees that we had, that's all. So that's, that's in your bag. That's not necessarily a mission.
Make a motion that we approve the agenda as presented.
Second. A motion by Mrs. Creek, a second by Mr. Hutchinson, to approve the agenda as presented. All those in favor? All right, opposed? Motion passes. All right, that brings us to our celebrations and our parents.
They've got lots of principals from Springdale High School to the podium. He's got some really nice people he'd like to introduce to our students.
Thank you, Board, for having us tonight. I'd like to invite Ms. Shannon to come to the podium to introduce some very special kids.
Hi, we have a slideshow, I think, to go with our stuff, if you could go to the next slide. So I'm the IB coordinator at Springdale High School. I was here last year. So you're all familiar still to me. I kind of, we have diploma recipients that we're going to recognize tonight. And, but I kind of wanted to give you a quick overview of some of the things that they have to do in addition to their high school diploma, because it's a lot. So in addition to taking their graduation requirements, they have to take what's considered three HL courses and three SL courses. So those are specific extra courses that they have to take. HL means that they're like two hundred hours of learning, and the SLs are about a hundred and fifty. So that's the difference in those. They also have to complete a four thousand word count research paper, and they do that the summer between their junior and senior year. They start it at the end of the junior year, work on it during the summer, and then we refine it beginning of their senior year. They also have to do a CAS project, which stands for Community Activity and Service. It's a three-piece project that they have to work on between their junior and senior years. And they also have lots of internal assessments. So for each course, it, some of them are written, and then some of them are verbal. Like, if it's a language course, they have to give a speaking assessment. They also have to complete a theory of knowledge course, which a lot of them do before school, during zero hour, semester of their junior year, semester of their senior year. And then to receive the diploma, they have to get twenty-four out of forty-two points. And then in May, they sit for external assessments for each course. And for each one of those, there's at least three assessments that they sit through. There's Paper One, Paper Two, Paper Three. I say that a lot in May. And so our cohort for this year, we had thirteen, so, and they sat for a total of two hundred and thirty-four exams. So their hands were tired, because it's all written. Yes. And then this coming up year, we have twenty-three, so we're growing. It's a process. But they're going to each come up and say a couple, they each have a slide, and they're going to introduce themselves and talk about themselves. And then I got diplomas early this year, so we're going to give them out tonight, too.
Good evening, Board. My name is Isaac Amaya. I have future plans to get a Electrical Engineering Bachelor of Science degree at the University of Arkansas. Right now, I'm in the process of perfecting resumes and being able to talk in front of groups, to be able to land summer internships for pursuing this engineering degree and a career in engineering, electrical engineering specifically. And I plan to be an R and D innovator. So that's research and development in companies such as Boeing, or Lockheed Martin, or even local companies such as Tyson Foods, J.B. Hunt, or Simmons Foods. What I learned from being an IB was these essential skills for thriving academically in college, as well as socially, so being able to be in a social environment with a lot of people, and have a conversation, and network, and connect with different people. So that way, in turn, we can help each other. I also learned how to manage my time effectively, communicate confidently as a leader, and advocate for my peers with empathy and purpose. Some extracurricular activities I had during my time at Springdale High School was, I was the president of the Springdale High School Student Ambassadors. I was a community service officer for the National Honor Society. I was in chamber choir and unity. I was also in theater and the Springdale High School Programming Team.
Great job.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Lizeth Hernandez Alanis, and I am at the University of Arkansas. I plan on getting my bachelor's in Communication Sciences and Speech Disorders, and then go on to get my master's for Speech Language Pathology. It's always been something I've wanted to do, and I just would really like to have a career in that field and helping others, a wide range of people, from younger to older, with different situations. And what I learned from being an IB was being more open-minded. A lot of times, I feel like a lot of us learn differently, and we at different paces. And personally, I learn a little bit, I feel like a little bit more slower, and I need to take more time with things. And while other of my classmates are a little bit more faster and ongoing with that, but we were all able to collaborate throughout the school year in different assignments and discussions during our classes. Overall, it taught me to become a well-rounded learner with skills to prepare for college, while also continuing to collaborate with others and making friendships that, to this day, I'm still with, really close to a lot of my friends that I met through IB. Extracurricular activities I was involved in was National Honor Society, Senior Class Council, Spanish Honor Society, and Key Club. Thank you.
The name of it, I wanted to know. It's, well, it's Palletri Estana de Benjambo. I'll do some business cards with you guys, you know, just so you can. So, yeah, I was just saying, I was, I'm majoring in business, right, and economics is my concentration. And so there would pretty much be times where, you know, unfortunately, my mom had gone really sick, so she would go to Mexico, and my parents would be gone, so I would pretty much be at school, pretty much be with IB, right, with my friends, amazing support. And then I would also be running this business, right, by myself. So it has really taught me a lot. And it has also taught me just the, the, like, how much value that people can hold in your life, right? Like, with IB, it was just so much, there would always be friends here for you, the teachers, if you had personal stuff going on, they would be there to help you. So that was honestly something really that had a big change, right, in my life. Some extracurricular activities I was in while in Springdale High School were Student Council, Concert Band, Marching Band, National Honor Society, and the B.I.T. Academy. Yeah, thank you.
Hello, my name is Julen Ledesma. I'm currently at the U of A studying in the Sam Walton College of Business, and I'm majoring in economics. And one, some things that IB has taught me was, one of the biggest things was how to manage my time. Right, there was always so much on my schedule outside of school. We also, well, my family, we operate a business. We have an ice cream shop here on Thompson. Really good ice cream. You should go check it out.
The name of it, I wanted to know.
It's, well, it's Palletri Estana de Benjambo. I'll do some business cards with you guys, you know, just so you can. So, yeah, I was just saying, I was, I'm majoring in business, right, and economics is my concentration. And so there would pretty much be times where, you know, unfortunately, my mom had gone really sick, so she would go to Mexico, and my parents would be gone, so I would pretty much be at school, pretty much be with IB, right, with my friends, amazing support. And then I would also be running this business, right, by myself. So it has really taught me a lot. And it has also taught me just the, the, like, how much value that people can hold in your life, right? Like, with IB, it was just so much, there would always be friends here for you, the teachers, if you had personal stuff going on, they would be there to help you. So that was honestly something really that had a big change, right, in my life. Some extracurricular activities I was in while in Springdale High School were Student Council, Concert Band, Marching Band, National Honor Society, and the B.I.T. Academy. Yeah, thank you.
Hello, my name is Glenn Nolan, and I'm about to start school at the University of Chicago. And I'm planning on doing computer science and building a strong foundation in cybersecurity, and taking advantage of three years guaranteed paid internships at Chicago. IB really taught me how to manage my time. I'm a really big procrastinator, and I still am now, but like, it's helped me, like, not be as much. IB has taught me how to, like, where I can procrastinate and where I can't. It's taught me how to think critically and approach challenges with resilience. The program really strengthened my research skills and problem-solving, and really taught me a lot about other perspectives. That's one of the main ideas of IB is to be able to look at things from everyone's perspective and not just your own. Some extracurriculars I was involved in, I was section leader in concert and marching band. I was in choir, National Honor Society. I was on the Springdale High School Programming Team and in the B.I.T. Academy.
Hello, my name is Glenn Nolan, and I'm about to start school at the University of Chicago. And I'm planning on doing computer science and building a strong foundation in cybersecurity, and taking advantage of three years guaranteed paid internships at Chicago. IB really taught me how to manage my time. I'm a really big procrastinator, and I still am now, but like, it's helped me, like, not be as much. IB has taught me how to, like, where I can procrastinate and where I can't. It's taught me how to think critically and approach challenges with resilience. The program really strengthened my research skills and problem-solving, and really taught me a lot about other perspectives. That's one of the main ideas of IB is to be able to look at things from everyone's perspective and not just your own. Some extracurriculars I was involved in, I was section leader in concert and marching band. I was in choir, National Honor Society. I was on the Springdale High School Programming Team and in the B.I.T. Academy. Thank you. Oh, and I'm a Questbridge Scholar.
Hello, my name is Artemio Urban Perez. My future plans, I'm currently attending University of Arkansas for an Electrical Engineering degree. What I learned in IB, I learned a lot of time management, because we had a lot of homework, and it was hard to, like, manage it all at once, but I'm hopeful, or, sorry, I'm grateful for it, because now in college, it's still the same, but I think I'm managing it easier. I also learned, like, how to communicate with my peers effectively, and just balancing everything in general. Some things I did in high school were, I was in marching band. I'm in, I was in a program called Upward Bound, and I was also in the Programming Team at Springdale.
My name's Brooke Sailors. I'm going to the University of Arkansas, and I'm currently studying biology to become a scientist physician, so like a PhD, MD track. Being an IB has taught me the value of the people that I surround myself with, and the importance of emotional support from peers, friends, and educators. So like, I still have lots of friends that I made in IB today. And whenever you're all very focused on academics, it just, it creates support that's much easier to, like, work together with. And I found that I studied better whenever I was with my peers, especially during May, during exams and stuff, where we would all quiz each other. And having such amazing teachers and a good mentor, which was from the IB Mentor Program, was a large part of what helped me succeed, both academically and mentally. And so I was the founder of the S.H.S. STEM Club, where we went to the Northwest Arkansas Regional Science and Engineering Fair. In Eleventh Grade, I placed in the state. I was also a part of S.H.S. Chamber Choir and Unity Show Choir, S.H.S. Key Club, Spanish Honor Society, Mixed Martial Arts, where I got my Junior Black Belt, and I was also a library aide.
I think my favorite thing on that whole slide is mixed martial arts and library aide background. That's a well-rounded person. Congratulations, great job.
I have their diplomas that we're going to.
Before we do that, do we have family of the students here? We could recognize them. You want to stand up, family?
All right, Isaac Amaya?
There's family right there. He's coming to help.
Making this official.
Yes, absolutely. Good job.
Lizeth? Julian?
I thought you came all the way from Chicago at first.
No, he goes next week. Urban? And Brooke?
Thank you, Mr. Emerson, Board, and Dr. Cleveland. I have to say that I'm incredibly honored and humbled to have received the two thousand and twenty-five, twenty-six Community Service, RISA Health Community Service Award. I will say that I share this award with all the principals, counselors, social workers, everybody out there who has helped create more opportunity for kids in Springdale Public Schools, from two mental health school-based providers six years ago till fifteen now. That is just incredible work that they've done. I also want to say, I got to use my glasses, though, because I can't see anymore. I don't know what's happening. I just, this team that we have here in Springdale, I mean, they will not take no for an answer. That if a kid needs mental health services, they'll, they'll beg, borrow, find any barrier to knock down to get services to any kid. So it's a privilege to work with all of them, and I'm incredibly, again, incredibly honored to have received that award. Okay, some really great news. So I thought of Clinton Bell about this, okay, and you're going to see how I'm going to connect all this here in just a minute. I'm happy to report to you today that we are at seventy-three point three-three percent. Never happened before in the last four years. I actually colored two thousand and twenty-two and twenty-three red, because that's the year that I got shingles, because I was so stressed out about this, right? So I just made it red, just as a reminder, all right? But I'll tell you this, that it is an incredible work. I thought of Clinton Bell when I thought of this, and it was only because I was there the other day talking about hunters and hackers. Fantastic people, this goes for you, too, actually, all of you in business. Fantastic people, plus great systems, equals mega success, most of the time, right? And we have fantastic people, social workers, counselors, administrators, you name it, we have them. They're fantastic. And we just kept evolving this system over and over and over, until we finally landed on a system that is just, I think it's the model for the state, and just crazy, crazy, crazy awesome. So I'm going to go ahead and go through, we still have twenty-two days left, too, I want you to know that, to make sure that we understand really what our purpose is here. And it's to first and foremost, contact every family. Make sure we're contacting all twenty-one thousand, six hundred families. And then we want to give every family an opportunity to complete a free and reduced meal application. That's really our number-one goal. And I want you to know, some of the great benefits that come with this are a free and nutritious lunch. It's hard for me not to say breakfast and lunch, because they got this right and got everybody free breakfast, but we're still working on this lunch piece. Free SAT vouchers, free ACT waivers, free college credit options, free summer camp, free reduced rates on college applications. And then really, district and community benefits from this is it's funding our SRO program and our CSSO programs, and nurses, and also social workers, and one-on-one technology. And I could go on and on and on about that. But I'm really in awe of the work of our team that has, that has done this year. Has, and I'm going to go back to that slide, is really, I mean, they started higher percentage, they are just moving that needle across the line, and that's the last four years for free and reduced lunch. Does anybody have any questions?
Parents have been really open.
Oh, absolutely.
And understanding what, what it means for all of our kids.
Hundred percent.
Our parents are really tremendous partners and very trusting and very good.
We've had a call center for the last three years, and I want to thank Stacy for allowing us to do that, Dr. Cleveland, and that's really been big, too, for after-hours, so we, we don't catch a lot of families home in the mornings, but we do catch them from three-thirty to seven-ish. And so that's been really good with our social workers, working that call center, and really, that's been a big impact as well.
I asked this question Friday, and I was going to ask you, too. What, what kind of impact do you think this, this seventy percent number we would be looking at if the state went to free lunch?
I don't, I don't really know the answer to that, but I can get back with you. You're talking financially, right?
Yeah, well, just like, it just seems like it might be harder to get the buy-in if the benefit was already there. was already there.
Correct. Yeah, Dr. Cleveland may be able to answer that better than I.
Well, Commissioner Wesdon would tell you that if there's no benefit of all eating for free, that the logic is that it would be harder to do. So the conversation then goes to these are benefits that the district would provide in access to opportunities for our kids. And so what Mr. Donnell, Elton, and Drew, just the highlights would have to be what we share and there are many others too.
Absolutely. I do want to give a special shout out to Missy Martinez, worked with her this summer. I had a vision about what I wanted this system to look like and we worked together, made this possible. And the really great thing about it is, and those of you who use the spreadsheets, raise your hand, I know you use spreadsheets. So for the last three years, I've just been constantly mail merging and updating and you know, finding duplicates and I mean, you're talking like lots. And I thought, man, there's gotta be a better way to do this. And so we got with Missy, Missy is just brilliant and she works in technology and we were able to build a system that updates, does all of that automatically every night at midnight, all of it. So now our people, our great people that we talked about earlier are working with current reality every single day instead of when Damon can get to updating the spreadsheet. And so it is made their work just so much more meaningful because they're not, there's nothing worse than calling a family that's already filled out an application and you've just wasted that time. Now that's not happening because it's happening on the sheet. Well, it could, but it, very small chance of that, but it's happening on the sheet instantaneously overnight so that they know that next morning when they're calling folks, that's the ones they need to be calling, which has been really great. So, alright, I'm gonna, up next, Ms. Amy Schultz. And there's a little clicker here for you, Amy. Absolutely, that's awesome.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Emerson, the school board and Dr. Cleveland. I'm happy to give a report on the nursing department. This month, we are working very hard on completing hearing and vision screenings in all schools, elementary through junior high for students in grades pre-K, kindergarten, first, second, fourth, sixth and eighth. So we coordinated a team of five to seven nurses to go into each of the schools to complete the screenings. And by doing this, we're able to receive, the students are able to receive services such as glasses a lot sooner, which decreases barriers to learning faster, of course. And also all overdue immunizations are due on October 1st. Nurses and social workers are contacting families to ensure all students are immunized by October 1st. Students who miss this deadline will not be allowed to return to school until immunizations are scheduled. With our immunization efforts, we're partnering with Arkansas Children's Hospital to host an immunization clinic at Harbor High School on September 15th. Also during the month of October, we are offering flu shots to all staff and students at every school and support building. Hearing tests will be available for staff again this year through natural hearing centers. We were able to help 67 employees receive hearing aids last school year through this program. So we're real excited to have them back. We are also preparing to redesignate all schools as HeartSave again next semester through the Project Adam program. The training that this program provides helped save a life at Walker Elementary last spring, so we're excited to keep that going as well. Thank you, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Did you say 67 hearing aids?
Yes.
How was one of them?
That's amazing.
That's amazing.
I'm glad we were able to help you.
I just had to follow up. I don't have any questions.
Okay, thank you so much.
Next, we're gonna have Larry Little, District Safety Coordinator.
Thank you, Mr. Emerson, Board members and Dr. Cleveland for the honor to present to you this evening. This year, we continue to build on a culture of safety all throughout the district. Since taking the job of District Safety Coordinator last year, it's, two words come to mind when I think of safety in the District of Springdale Public Schools, never satisfied. It would be easy to look at all that we are doing currently and all that we have done in the past and think, well, we've done enough. But when it comes to safety of students and staff and families, we can never be satisfied. We can never rest on our laurels and it's an honor to be a part of such an amazing group of people who are all dedicated to the task of keeping our students and staff safe as we possibly can. We continue every day to build on the culture of safety. We have partnered with District Communications to remind students and staff and families about crosswalk safety. I had a blast at Jones Elementary last week, getting to present in front of their whole entire assembly and then take fifth grade students, three fifth grade classes, actually out to a crosswalk and do a training with them and just basically discuss the importance of why it is so important that they pay attention and the crosswalk, actually use the crosswalk. The slide hasn't been updated yet. As of today, there have been 22 building safety walkthroughs completed and those will be every month, I get into every single school at least one time, sometimes more often. And those walkthroughs ensure accountability and adherence to school protocols, 25-point check that every school undergoes. And whenever I hit submit, a copy of that report goes to the building safety designees for them to identify trouble spots and look for areas where they can improve. I'm sure some of you walked through the Open Gate Weapons Detection System here tonight that we've deployed at several school board meetings. We've also used it at football games this year. Last year, it was very well received at the state basketball tournament, the state wrestling tournament. And the community response has been overwhelmingly positive to these devices being used. Hardly ever do we get any kind of pushback or resistance and we do get a lot of feedback of, hey, thank y'all for doing this, hey, we're glad you're here. They can move 3,600 people an hour through the system and our staff does an outstanding job. If the system trips, bringing people over, divesting whatever item may cause it to go off. The professionalism of the staff, of the people that we have working these machines at all kinds of events is second to none and I can't say enough good things about the people that present that five-star customer service every single time at every single event. One, the most important thing that I would like to present or spotlight tonight is the transition from CSSOs or two CSSOs from SROs at all of our middle schools, at Hellstern, Helen Tyson, J O Kelly and Sonora and also Rollins Elementary. That transition has gone fantastically well and there are five CSSO officers with over 85 years experience over various disciplines in law enforcement, safety, military. We have everybody from former chiefs of police to former Navy SEALs to former Army Rangers. All walks of life, all different backgrounds of private security, corporate security and now they're on our team and that's a tremendous, just to get to work with these guys and hang out with them is just a blessing to me. This has been a tremendous savings to the district without sacrificing any safety or security. We have not backed up one inch in the level of safety and security that we provide our schools. We also have strengthened the amazing relationship that we have with Springdale Police Department. I can't tell you how many times I've heard Mr. Donnell go all across the state when he talks to school districts about standing up a new CSSO program. Slide number one is, do you have a good relationship with your local police department? And if you don't, stop. The relationship that we have with Springdale Police Department is imperative and it's amazing. We can't thank those guys enough for their cooperation. We train together, we collaborate on so many levels. This year, we've also strengthened our partnership with the Washington County Sheriff's Office at Sonora Elementary and Sonora Middle School. Now you'll see deputies coming into the school just to kind of establish a contact there, both with admin and with students. They visit the school on a regular basis if they need free Wi-Fi to submit a report and send an email, they can do that. We have radios available to them if they need to use those in the event of an emergency. And so we are really, really excited about the avenues that we have for further collaboration with more of our law enforcement agencies. Also, they have a really nice shooting range that they said we could come and use, so I'm looking forward to that. But that's all I have for you fine people tonight. Do y'all have any questions for me? I'm gonna leave before you ask any, thank you.
Thank you, that's great.
Good evening, Board, Dr. Cleveland. I want to thank you all for allowing me to be here tonight to give you some updates and some celebrations about K8 Connect. I think I'll steal a tag that I just heard Mr. Little use. I really am finding a footing of blessing in my time at K8, just in these first few weeks of school. And I just want to share some of the fun that we've had. There've been bumps and challenges, but you know, that's kind of part of the gig and to be expected. But overall, things have gone really well. We've had a visit from a family pet, the pig that showed up one morning, so I wanted to include that there. We've had some learning going on in classes that you would expect and I included Javi's little picture there in the top left. Sometimes that's the faces we see, but by the end, you'll see Javi's picture with me on the left. We can find ways to get to smiles by the end of the day and one common statement we've been making to students throughout our days is, hey, we're here until three. We're here until three. And almost every day, we've been able to end the day with smiles on faces and successful endings to any kind of, you know, upset or problem that's happened throughout the day. I would quote too, just as I kind of go into this, my daughter's favorite musician is Ann Wilson. I don't know if any of you are familiar with her, but she has a new album coming out called Stars. And I was driving here from school this afternoon and one of those songs came on my playlist and to quote a little snippet from the Stars album that's coming out here in a few weeks, "Dreamers never stop dreaming, believers keep on believing. When the world keeps on dragging down this dreamer's heart, I look up and remember I was still made for the stars." And I just want to tell you, these kids are still made for the stars. And that's our goal and that's our heart at K8 is to help them find their place because they're still dreamers and we're still believing in what their capacity is for learning and for how we can help them achieve their goals. And so just to look at some of our celebrations and updates, this is my friend Kathy here and I thought that was a great picture to share on our celebrations slide with you. She is our only kindergartner right now at K8 Connect, but she has been a joy to have and is finding her space with some first grade friends in her classroom. We have transitioned from the former mascot at K8 Connect to becoming the K8 Aviators. And that's been really exciting because it's helping us kind of bridge the gap with the relationship with our sister campus who obviously, spending seven years at Archer, kind of gave me a footing to be able to do that and I've been really excited. Dr. Davis and I have really worked on some ideas on how to even bridge some mentorship opportunities, how to increase collaboration with our staff between K8 and Archer. Both campuses are doing things that are very unique to Springdale Public Schools and so they need different supports and different resources. And so having that connection between the two campuses is going to be imperative to our growth and to our success in the future. So we're very excited to be the Aviators and our team at NAP has really adopted us in this new mascot. Every morning when they go on the loudspeaker to welcome their students, they welcome the Aviators as well and that's been really fun to kind of see the response there. Our current enrollment is 47. We're averaging about one to two new applications a week. Got one on my way here that popped up on my phone, so we'll probably soon be at 47. And I would estimate that by Christmas time, we'll see those kindergarten numbers rise as Ms. Bee reminded me earlier, the pumpkins haven't come out yet. And so when the pumpkins come out and everybody gets settled in, we may find some friends that need some additional support to get settled in, so try to bring them over as soon as we can to get them plugged into the supports that they need. One of the greatest blessings to K8, I believe this year, has been our relationship with Hope School Project. I cannot thank you enough as a board for approving that relationship. Dr. Cleveland for finding that resource and plugging us into that. Ms. Jessica Floor is the Director of the Hope School Project and it comes out of Hope School Academy from Bentonville. And their goal for their program coming into schools and supporting is to help create a safe, respectful and productive learning environment for all students to foster personal responsibility and academic success. And so we're really excited to partner with her. She's currently coming in onsite three days a week, working with our team, working with me frankly, to help me grow and learn and see the things that we need to change in the program and different ways to support our staff. As well as, we're getting ready on Thursday, we're gonna have our first kind of official work session meeting to reflect over this first month of school. And then she will begin her in-home support. And that is really the gap that I believe has been missing in supporting these kiddos is finding a way to support them in the home. So we're gonna select two or three families and she's going to go into the home and help them establish routines and procedures that can help their kiddos be more successful so that all the work we're doing at school is not lost when they go home or when we have a three-day weekend or we have a week off for Thanksgiving that they can come back to us and still have those routines and procedures. Another wonderful support that we have, I believe that Ms. Landigan and other staff members applied for last year is through Tears Gap Relief. And what this is, it's trauma-informed educators reaching students and they kind of have two different components. The component that we're accessing is their component where they come in and it's developed by this gap relief, they come in and support teachers because the work is hard. And the teachers have the right hearts and they want to support the kids, but boy, they are weary by the end of the day and certainly by the end of the week. And so this is an opportunity to really kind of pour into them and support them. We're excited for what the future of that looks like. Megan Taylor is our contact there. She's the Co-Executive Director of Tears Gap Relief and has really been a lot of fun to work with. She brings fun and excitement into also a way to support the staff as they're dealing with kids who have stories that are just really hard and it's really hard to take that kind of stuff home with you and be able to come back the next day with a smile on your face. Updates about admissions and transitions, we are looking at making our admissions and transitions process a more reciprocal process so that the process that we go through to bring students to our campus is a very similar process that we'll go through to return those students and transition them back. That's a huge piece of the work that we do is preparing them to transition back to their zone school so that they can experience their traditional school life, right? Because it's not the same when you're in a school with 45 kids versus being at a traditional elementary, middle school or junior high campus. And so that's our goal. We're working with what I'm calling a boots-on-the-ground team that's going to be not only reviewing applications, but also helping provide some coaching and supports for teachers in other buildings. So going in and observing these students before we get the application at K8 to try to see is there anything we can do in addition before we remove them from that campus to support them onsite. And the principals have been really receptive to that across the district. I've already worked with several and kind of putting some boots-on-the-ground things in place. And so we're excited about that. And then the last piece that I'll share, we're transitioning away from our former point sheet program to what we're calling behavior care plans. It's really just a way to create a narrative of how things are going for the kids. Parents have been extremely receptive. They love this idea because their kids are not coming home saying, I lost my points and upset. and upset, but they're coming home and able to articulate what was good about their day and what do I need to work on with my day. So, we're very excited about those Behavior Care Plans and how they will continue to develop our future. This is kind of a play on words here. The kids obviously are our future, but we're also looking at what the future of K-8 can be, and we're looking at how we can provide some district-wide behavior support. We know that that's certainly a challenge that every school faces, and we've got to have a team of people that can kind of become the experts. We're not the experts yet, but we're gonna be. And so, that's what we're working on and building our staff's capacity to be able to do that. And one of the big pieces tying back to those two things is just restructuring supports for students who have IEPs and also 504s, because a lot of times, we get applications for those kiddos, and it's a different type of support. So, really trying to keep an eye on the two different types of supports that are needed for those kids. And if I may, I'll just end with a statement that I've heard often, and I'm gonna just add to that statement, that our goal is, so goes K-8, so goes the district. And so goes Springdale, so goes the state. And we're excited to help lead that work and very grateful for the opportunity. Dr. Cleveland pushed me out of my comfort zone, and I'm grateful. So, thanks for that. Questions? Be happy to answer anything you have. This was my bus ride home with my friend Lincoln today. The only way he would get on the bus is if I would get on with him, and so, I said, "Well, I'll go to the Board, a little bit of a hot mess with some frizzy curls, and it'll be fine." And so, here we are after my bus ride home with my friend Lincoln, still made it back on time. The bus driver dropped me off at the street in front of the school, and I was able to get here on time. So, good end to the day.
It's kind of an admission impossible, should you choose to accept the mission. I'm glad you're here.
Thank you, Board. Appreciate it.
So, Lynn, Dr. Greep's going to introduce a couple of people that you know. It's for a very neat award.
Well, thank you, Dr. Cleveland and Board, for this opportunity to present. Last week, I was going through my emails, and I came across one that caught my eye. It was from Athena Hang, who graduated last year. You remember her. She was in front of here presenting one time. She was our senior class president, who gave an incredible speech, was involved in emceeing a National Institute of Health presentation. I mean, just a complete rock star. And so, we're certainly proud of her. She is at Yale right now, and within her email to me, she said, "You know, I'm doing great, but I just wanted to let you know that I recommended Ms. Farrar and Mr. Fink for the Yale Educator Award." There were 300 applicants, and you know, again, I just think about going to Yale, being so invested, so busy, a whole new world, and what does she do? She says, "I want to stop and give thanks. I want to recommend two people," and in her words, she said, "They changed my life. I wouldn't be where I am today without Ms. Farrar and Mr. Fink." And again, I just think that speaks of her character. They're the only two that won out of the state of Arkansas. So, again, we're certainly proud of them, and you know, when I think about the recommendation, though, I do want to say, she's right. You know, Ms. Farrar and Mr. Fink, they go above and beyond every day. Coming to Harbor High School is not just a job, but it's a passion that they have. I know kids look up to Mr. Fink as being a mentor, one that's almost kind of like a dad to them. He has their respect. And then, I think about Ms. Farrar and the number of kids that she serves, and she does it with passion, and I think about the details that go into her work to make these applications thrive. And again, I couldn't be more proud of them, and again, I just thank Athena for recommending them. But anyway, I'd like for them to say a few words. Board?
I'd like to say a few words.
Don't fight over who goes first.
I know. Like, oh, my gosh. I like to be behind the scenes, not in front of them. Last year was my first year at Harbor, and I started in July, and I saw this child coming up to me, you know, I'm like in gym clothes, working in my office, and she was like, "I'm Athena, and I'm one of your new students, and I need to meet you to make sure this is all gonna be okay." I was like, "Okay, yes, this is gonna be great." And then, from then on, she came in once a week, and I really looked forward to her meetings every week. She is a wonderful, wonderful person, and she was so easy to talk to, and she was so grateful for our time, and she would talk about that a lot, like just having that moment that she could come and sit and talk with us and form that relationship. And so, it made it so easy to write all these wonderful things about her because she was such a wonderful child. And I'm so excited for her. I can't wait to see all the wonderful things that she does, and just so proud of her.
Yeah, obviously, she's phenomenal, and so, it's a blessing to get to teach her. I got to teach her for two years, so it was really special to kind of carry on that relationship. I think Dr. Greep kind of cheated with the math a little bit, you know? It's like 300 and only one in the state of Arkansas, but I mean, like, how many are in the state of Arkansas at Yale? So, the sample size is pretty small, so I don't think this award really truly speaks to us as much as it is to her thoughtfulness and her gratitude and her ability to write. We didn't do anything special other than invest in someone who's special, and so, it was humbling to get just nominated. I don't really care what people at Yale think, but it was nice to know that someone that I do know thought that our work was important and valuable. So, I mean, I think if you were at the graduation ceremony, she reminded us to thank your people, and so, it was nice to be thanked. But I think, you know, we all have our own people, and you know, I've had to, you know, split myself as a teacher. We all, teacher, principal, counselor, we split our time and our heart with our family at home and our family at school, and so, we're equally here for the support we have at home, for the people we love. So, I know my wife has had to share me with 100-plus kids every year, and so, I love her, and she's just been my constant companion, support, encouraging, and so, it's really cool. You know, sometimes you feel like a doormat, sometimes you feel like a stepladder, some days a little both, but it was nice to feel like you helped out somebody that is going places and is willing to reach back and say, "Thanks," as she's reaching the top. So, thank you, guys, for having us here.
I think it says a lot about, you know, a lot of these awards, a lot of times, you fill out an application yourself and brag on yourself, and then you submit it, and then you win an award about how well you did at talking about yourself. And for, you know, for her to, you said you didn't do anything. Obviously, you did a lot, but you also didn't do anything to fill this out, but you still were recognized for something. So, I think that says a lot, that somebody thought of you and you didn't just think of yourself and fill out an application. So, and then, I also thought it was pretty cool how you both were supposed to talk about yourselves and why you won the award, and you just talked about her the whole time. And so, I think that just says a lot about the type of people that you are and where your focus is, and so, that's why you're up here today, in my opinion, but thank you for all you do.
Yeah, I was gonna add to that, but I know somebody feels exactly the same way about you two. Just so you know.
Yeah, I mean, great students make great staff, and so, I've had some in the past, some currently, and so, it's not lost on us that we get to work with really high-achieving students, and it's very rewarding, but...
Well, it's if we're, I ask students across, anytime I'm anywhere, I ask them, even if they're in their 30s, who their favorite teacher is. And the number of students, though, that will come back, and one named you, Mr. Fink, that has, blows my mind. I mean, like, my kids won't remember half a dozen people, but they always will, and they will name specific things, like that you did or ways, and so, I think that reminds all of us that work with students is our attitude and our time with students affects them in a much bigger way than we can imagine. And so, we should, you know, take a deep breath every time we're with them and go, "Okay, you're the most important person in the room." And I think both of you do that, obviously, from what she said and from what we've heard from many other people.
Thank you for saying this. Thank you for being here.
She's ready to sit down. We're gonna let her sit down. Good job. Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Well, I told you next month, I'll board them up, bud. But I can tell you, they're, those awards from Yale, they're great examples of just about every teacher up and down the line, springtime, free hearts. Proud of all. Speaking of, we have a list, an updated list of the staff. A year, about 190 or so of those staff members certified, and then there's another list of classified. And so, I just wanted to submit those to you every month. You'll have another list as we add. Most of them will be either long-term subs or in the classified arena, but as you know, the law has changed, and so, now I need to submit those to you, hopefully, so that's my effort to do so. And in order to make it easy on Ms. Dee Hobbs, who collects this information, I'm just gonna ask her to add those names to this list, if that's okay with you. The next report that I have, where your student enrollment, now, student enrollment report is something that's a difficult report to make to provide to you. Over time, we've been growing district, and so, as far as being a provider of this, it's somewhat negative in that it appears that we, like all the other districts in the state, or most of the other districts in the state, are experiencing decline. And you might ask, well, why are we declining? Birth rates in the state are down. You have things like education free accounts and the rise of homeschooling, additional additions of private school vouchers and things like that could be part of that. But you've also got, you also have different kinds of policies at the national level and state level that impact students and families' decisions on where they live, whether it's in our state or out of our state. And I'm not gonna go further than that, other than to say, on the 11th day of 2024, we had 21,758 K-12 students. And we count the 11th day because that's the day we have our 10th day drop, right? So, every year, if students don't show up on the 10th day, the next day, we drop students we haven't seen. That's the requirement of the state. So, we had 21,758. By the end of the year, we had roughly about 200 to 225 students that have left us, and most of those students left us after January. So, we experienced rapid decline in the spring. On the 11th day of 2025, in August, we had 21,204. That's a negative number of 554 students. Now, does that mean that we didn't grow new students? Now, we had a significant number of new students come into the district, but a net loss of 554. So, every day, I have Mr. Jacob Kilton, who's our East School Bureau, provide me a report of the number of students that are in the district and the number of students that leave the district, and then what the net gain is or the net loss. Sometimes, we gain 11, sometimes we lose 9, and it's interesting. And I ask, where do they go? Do they go to the local district, close? Do they go somewhere in the state, out of state, or out of the country? And now, I've asked him, as of this evening, to provide additional information. Which grade, from each grade, K through 12, what grades will be seeing the most loss? This year, we're about 110 short in kindergarten from the previous year, so we're seeing way few kindergartners show up to school. This is not unique to us. This is a phenomenon that we're seeing. I've asked my friends all across the district, superintendents across the state, and they're experiencing the same kindergarten loss. So, I'm not sure if that's a birth rate situation, or parents are choosing to hold students out, or if they're choosing to homeschool in some form. We don't have that information up to date. We're gonna do some more research, and I want to have another report for you next month, that I'll be able to break out by grade, the number of students that we've lost that were here this year or this past year compared to where they went potentially, and the number that came in. Does that sound all right? Are there any questions, other questions that you'd like to have me answer related to student population? Because I have a lot of questions, and so, I just think it's important we find out. Mr. Donnell and I, we talk a lot about this, and he's working on potentially a survey. In fact, he may even want to tell us where he is in this, about any parent or child that leaves us, why? Did we do something wrong? Did you have a change in plans? Was there a need to move, something like that? Is there something we could have done different? And so, we really want to be responsive to our parents, so is there anything that...
I really like that.
I know in your businesses, you do those things. When you have personnel leave, sometimes you have exit interviews. So, we're working on to see if we can do better. You know, if we don't know, if we're doing something that's blatantly obvious and we're not asking, how do we improve? So, that's our effort. It's gonna be our effort. And if it's something that's, you know, federal policy, state policy, or something else, there's not a lot we can do about that. But if it's simply because we didn't react appropriately, or someone in the school, or maybe it was me, or talked harshly to your child or to the parents, we can work on that. It's concerning to me, but school districts and public schools, they're just inclined, you know, I think we've gone from about 460,000 students in public schools to around 430,000 students, and that's a sick number.
What's our pre-K numbers?
Our pre-K numbers, Ms. Fink?
They're stable.
Yeah, they're stable, but what's that max number? I don't know where we are today. Megan told me it's around 1,000.
We're at 1,200.
Is it, are we up to 1,200? Okay. So, that puts us up higher, obviously. And I usually report K-3. K-3, not 1,200. All right. Well, I'll have more information because that's concerning to me. I know it is for you as well. There are no other questions about this, Miss Fink?
Fairly good, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Emerson and Board. There is a lot going on in elementary right now, and I'm here to talk about third grade promotion. But before I do, I'm going to give you a little bit of background to kind of remind you of why we're here tonight to talk about third grade promotion, and this is all stemming from the Learns Act. Before I do, I'll give you kind of the state of the state. So, every other year, 4th grade and 8th grade across the nation randomly take an assessment called the NAEP, and that stands for the National Assessment for Educational Progress. Arkansas is not immune to that, so every other year, Springdale participates, schools randomly are chosen to take this assessment. Arkansas, you can see, has 28% proficiency for 4th grade, 25% proficiency 8th grade. Nationally, the score anywhere is between 30 and 35%, so it's not a super-high score that we get nationally. We do not get these results reported back by school. We just know how we do as a state. So, when Governor Sanders took over, she decided that this was not acceptable for the state of Arkansas, and we needed to do something about it. So, therefore, the Learns Act was born. And so, part of the Learns Act addressed 3rd grade reading proficiency, and a section of the Learns Act outlined requirements for promotion to 4th grade, good cause exemptions for promotion to 4th grade, and required specific supports and interventions, which we'll dive into deeper here in just a few minutes. So, in alignment with the Arkansas Learns Act, beginning at the end of the '25-'26 school year, which is this year, 3rd grade students are expected to meet a minimum, and I want to emphasize, reading standard to be promoted to 4th grade. This requirement aligns with a vision set forth in the Arkansas's Right to Read Act, which the Arkansas's Right to Read Act was born in 2017. They revised it in 2017. They revised it in 2024 to align with the Learns Act, reinforcing the state's commitment to literacy as a foundation for lifelong learning, ensuring that every student receives the support needed to read, read, by 3rd grade. And I'm emphasizing reading for a purpose, and you'll find out why here in just a second. So 3rd grade promotion, at the end of the 2025-26 school year, 3rd graders who do not meet the state-defined minimum reading standard and do not qualify for a good cause exemption will not be promoted to 4th grade. So this is how it will be determined. So at the end of the year, students in 3rd through 10th grade take, well, actually 3rd through, yeah, 10th grade, made some end-of-course exams in 11th grade, I believe, take an Atlas assessment. And 3rd graders who do not pass the Atlas assessment will not be promoted to the 4th grade. And they're looking at an ELA score, and I will give further definition of what that means. So students who do not receive a passing score of a 2, 3, or 4 will not be promoted to 4th grade, or do not have a good cause exemption. So any student who receives a Level 1 may not be promoted. And you see, in between a Level 1 and a Level 2, they have reading standard. So Level 1, you're at risk of being retained in 3rd grade. So this slide, I have Atlas ELA score versus an Atlas reading score. So when students get their scores back at the end of the year, they actually get two scores. There's an ELA score because they actually take a reading assessment and a writing assessment. And the ELA score is a combination of the reading and the writing. So they take both tests, and they combine them together, and you get an ELA score. Then the students also get a reading score, separate from that. But for whatever reason, when the state gives the reports back, you can see, I've actually put a student's report up here for you. You have the ELA performance, and this actually, the student on this assessment, when you combine his ELA performance, his reading and his writing scores, he has a Level 1. But when you look at his reading performance, he has a Level 2. But for whatever reason, when the state is asking us to make retention decisions, we are making retention decisions on this ELA score for reading and writing. We do not know why. This was asked a thousand different ways when we were in a training session, and a thousand different times they told us to use the ELA score. So we do not understand why they're doing this. So this student, according to his report, can read. And under the definition of what they say should count as a passing assessment score, we should pass him on to 4th grade. But because of how they're having us report this, he does not qualify to pass on to the 4th grade. Does not make sense to us, but this is how they're having us look at this report. So that's why I was stressing reading standard. The law says reading, but they're having us look at a reading and a writing score. So the role of the district through this process, if you'll remember last year, I brought some teachers, brought some principals, we talked to you about the K-2 screeners, we talked to you about the process that our teachers are going through, from kindergarten through 2nd grade to intervene early on, so that we're not waiting until our students get to 3rd grade to start this intervention process. We start intervening day 1 of school, so that our students, we're giving them every possibility that they can get, so that we're not, to the point when they get to 3rd grade, that we're having to retain them as 3rd graders. So we are using all kinds of formative assessments, we're using tools to progress monitor them, we're trying to give them every opportunity that we can give them early on, so that we're not having to retain students in 3rd grade. So we talked about that last year. We're doing intervention reading plans, we're communicating with families, so that we're doing everything possible so we're not at this point.
Quick question.
Yes.
You said it starts at the end of this year.
Mm-hmm.
Have we, having previous year's numbers, have we, or test scores, have we compared this being applied to those and what that does as far as like, a projection of if it wasn't played in the last couple of years, like, how many?
I'll get there in just a few minutes, yeah. A couple more slides, I'll tell you what the implications could be.
Okay.
So we have explicit systematic interventions focused on literacy skills. Every school has this in place. We have data tracking processes in place. We know, student by student, what skills are missing. Teachers are pulling small groups of students. They're communicating with families, are giving individualized instruction, progress monitoring is happening. All of this work is happening during the collaborative team meetings on Wednesdays, communicating with families, professional learning for educators, we're giving training through our high-quality instructional materials. And the individual reading plans are being populated, they're updating those based on the data that's being collected. They keep referring to this district toolkit. That toolkit has not yet been released. I even checked prior to coming down here this evening to see if the toolkit has been populated. We still have not seen this toolkit, nor do we know what's in the toolkit, because they haven't released it yet. Good cause exemptions. So there are reasons why we could say that a student is, that we could go ahead and promote to 4th grade. These would be students who have significant cognitive disabilities, those would be students who are in our CBI, SEC classrooms, students who have IEPs or 504 plans. If we can document more than two years of science of reading-aligned interventions that we've been delivering with fidelity, and I would say that that would be all of our students who have IEP or 504 plans, students who have had less than three years of formal English learner instruction, and I can give you those numbers here in just a minute. Students who have already been retained. So we wouldn't retain a student for more than one year if they've already been retained in kindergarten, or maybe a student that started kindergarten late, we wouldn't retain them again in 3rd grade. Students who have already previously been evaluated for special education, but maybe have had a lot of intervention, but continue to demonstrate a reading need, or students who have justifiable good cause exemptions because they've had a traumatic event. I personally have had this happen in my family. My oldest daughter, the week of high-stakes testing, took my youngest daughter across the street to play at a friend's house on her way home. A dog chased her and her little sister, and she picked up her three-year-old little sister, ran across the street, dropped her. Little sister hit her head on the concrete. We ended up at the hospital with her fractured skull. We had a one-way flight to Arkansas Children's Hospital in Little Rock, and her principal mom did the best thing that she knew to do and sent her child to school the next day to take the high-stakes test. And my very, very smart daughter, who had passed every test that she had ever taken in her life, did not pass that test that day. And so she would be a child that experienced a traumatic event, that did not do well on an assessment, that would probably qualify for good cause exemption under that circumstance. So for the students that we're either retaining in 3rd grade, or we're promoting to 4th grade for good cause exemption, here's what we would be required to do. We would be required to assign them to a highly qualified teacher that would be in 3rd grade or 4th grade. They would be required to receive at least 90 minutes of daily evidence-based reading instruction aligned with science of reading. We would be, they would be required to receive a read-at-home plan aligned with their individual reading plan, including strategies based on the science of reading. We would have to prioritize for at-home literacy tutoring grants, which we apply for every year, have access to additional interventions tailored to their individual literacy needs, and be tracked through a school-maintained data system to monitor progress and evaluate the effectiveness of the interventions that we're providing. Now, this is how they're identifying a highly qualified teacher. They take all of our teachers who teach ELA, that's 3rd through, all the way up through high school, and they assign our teachers a VAM score, which is how much they're growing students. And they rank all of the teachers in the state of Arkansas from the highest VAM score down to the lowest VAM score in the state. Not in the district, but in the state. And so then, all of the teachers in the state who are in that top quartile, they're considering the most highly effective in Arkansas. So you can imagine, in our district, we have a handful of those teachers, and they're kindergarten all the way up through high school. So our highly qualified teachers are high school teachers, junior high teachers, and elementary teachers, but we need them in 3rd and 4th grade. And our kindergarten, 1st and 2nd grade teachers don't have VAM scores because they haven't given an assessment that's eligible to receive a VAM score yet. And so it doesn't make any sense to take a high school teacher, pluck them out of high school, and throw them in a 3rd and 4th grade classroom. So the system that they have set up to do that doesn't make a lot of sense to us. They can have a Master Professional Education designation, which is really hard to get. It's nearly impossible to get added to your license. But then they added with a focus on science of reading, we don't really know what that is. Or they can be highly effective in the educator effectiveness system. But then at the bottom, they says, need help developing your staffing plan, refer to the district toolkit for alternative options for identifying a highly qualified teacher. Again, the district toolkit doesn't exist yet, so we don't know how to do that. So here are the possible implications for Springdale. So last year in the state of Arkansas, 10,000 students were eligible for retention based on their Atlas performance. Dr. Smith and I calculated that was approximately 30% of the students in the state of Arkansas were eligible for retention. So Springdale currently has 1,572 3rd grade students enrolled. Approximately 595 students would qualify for good cause exemption based on their ELL status, so 38% of our 3rd grade students. And remember, that's less than three years of formal ELL instruction in Arkansas. Approximately 221 students would qualify for good cause exemption based on SPED status. Those are students with an IEP. That's 14% of our 3rd grade students. Last year, 508 3rd grade students scored a Level 1 on Atlas ELA assessment. Now supposedly, now we just got last year's assessment data back, like, a month ago. Supposedly, when our 3rd grade students take the assessment this year, we should get it back in less than 24 hours. So fingers crossed that really happens, so that we do know who we will be retaining. We'll see. Approximately 193 would qualify for good cause exemption based on their ELL status. Approximately 71 would qualify for good cause exemption based on our SPED status, which means potentially, we could retain 244 students, which would be 16% of our 3rd grade students. Is this number high? Yes, I do believe so. Will we retain this many children? No, probably not. I'm pretty good at helping people think about good cause exemptions, that we would go ahead and promote students forward for. But that would mean that we would have to have a whole bunch of highly qualified teachers in 4th grade, that we would put these students in their classrooms. So are there any questions about 3rd grade promotion?
When do they take the Atlas again?
There's a window, they start taking it in April, mid-April, beginning of May.
Have we shared this data with the Department of Education?
We have not shared this data, just because I just calculated it today. But I don't think that they would be surprised by this. I know that Secretary Aliva was in front of a legislative committee the other day, and I think he was being questioned pretty hard about 10,000 students potentially being retained in the state of Arkansas. Am I correct in what I just said, Dr. Cleveland?
So I think my question is, I mean, obviously, we want kids to be on grade level. We don't want to just send them on just to send them on. But if a kid, if a student, let's say one of those 244 students is a master at every other math, whatever, fill in the blank. So we're going to hold a student back for a full school year, they're going to repeat everything else that they've mastered, they're going to repeat it again just because, okay.
That's correct.
And there's not, there's no talk or, there's no way of, once they master, once they get to that proficiency level in reading, a month into the second school year, send them on to 4th grade in the middle of the school year?
Yeah.
You see what I'm saying? Like, once, I just feel like we preach personalization and customization, and that is not either one of those things. If you're making a student repeat math when they don't need to, that's a waste of their time, but that's just my opinion.
I know Texas, they're going away from the star exam. They're going to a new exam, they're going to test three times a year, small chunks, and they're going to look at growth. So they're not doing what we're doing. Secretary Aliva and I had a small conversation about studying at home and see what that looked like, if we moved to something like that. So he understands that high stakes is hard, and especially for some of the things like Ms. Pink was talking about. You had small bites, and you could really see what students did throughout the year. That was not a reasonable reason. That's just an aside.
Yeah.
I have a, I personally have issue with, in my opinion, you know, because I have a 2nd grader that will be going into 3rd grade, that I could see maybe would struggle with this next year, altering his life based on an assessment we take on one day.
100%. How many times have we given that? This is only the third time, right, for Atlas test?
Yes. Yeah. Well, this will be, yes, this will be the third year that we've given that assessment.
Are only public schools having to do this?
Yes, public schools. Anybody who receive, yes, public schools.
But not anyone who receives public money?
No.
Well, everybody receives public money that accepts the voucher.
That's what I'm saying, so that they do not have to retain.
Correct. Is that correct, Dr. Cleveland?
I'm sending you the article right now when I read it.
And everything that the, you know, that, all of the, up to the 3rd grade, we've had in place in Springdale forever, the intervention, the RTI, like, we've had it. Like, we intervene, we, we start day 1 of school.
I mean, I think you nailed it, that altering a person's life based on one day and one test is, that's asking a lot. And then to not have any supports or game plan in place, really, which is kind of status quo, but it is what it is. quo, but it is what it is. Put the cart before the horse.
And I think nationally, this isn't an Arkansas problem. If nationally, we were seeing students achieving better, like, if nationally, we were seeing 85% proficiency, then I would say Arkansas has a problem. But if nationally, we're only seeing 30 to 35% are proficient on the NAEP assessment, it's not an Arkansas problem. That's, and it's how historically it's been. Does that make sense?
Yes. But they've just got some issues too. Secretary Oliva shared that the NAEP still has questions on about telephones. How many students are going to have a telephone? It's got to be relevant to the base world too, when you're asking a question.
And I always question who's setting the bar for proficiency, like, what does that mean?
And why, why is writing included?
Well, exactly. Why is writing included? When the law says it's a reading, like, we're reading on grade level. In my opinion, that what I was showing you, that two versus a one, that's my good cause exemption. You're reading on grade level, you're a two, you're not writing on grade level, which is causing you to be a one. That's the good cause exemption, in my opinion.
A lot of work to be done. I think there are a lot of people that work on this issue.
I know you can't answer this, and I know, I don't even know if you could find this out, but I would be really curious to know what kind of, like, if we retain 244 students, like, what, what would that look like from a staffing standpoint? And, I mean, I can't ima, I mean, I don't even know how you would begin to try to figure that out.
We played this sticky note game in Dr. Smith's office the other day trying to figure it out, and it's really hard to do because it's, it's like you go down to two fourth grade teachers and go up to six third grade teachers, but it's, it's hard to know, just depending on, you know.
If you look at big picture, you're basically adding a year for 244 students to the state budget. I mean, and if it's 10,000.
Well, and then, but then at some point, you're going to have a bubble when these kids get up, like, you're going to decrease secondary. At, at some point, it's going to hit the secondary schools, and it's when it's really going to impact staffing. Because it's easier at elementary, because you just play the subtract two teachers from here and add two teachers here, and you just flip swap teachers, but when it really gets up into the secondary schools, it's harder to play that game because you still have to have algebra teachers, and you have to have geometry teachers, and you have to have...
Are there restrictions on moving teachers? I mean, if I understand it correctly, not all teachers are certified in all grades?
Elementary is easier to play that game, because you're universally certified, usually K6. It's when you get to the content teachers where it's harder to do that, because you can't swap an English teacher for a math teacher typically, when you get to the secondary schools. So when that bubble hits, secondary is when it's going to get harder to play that game and be efficient.
Is there potential of doing a third, fourth split?
It is really hard to do split classes at the elementary level, just because the standards are so hard, there's so many standards to teach, split classes are just really difficult at elementary. It, it's easier just to swap teachers around at elementary than it is to do a split class. And we can do it efficiently, I think, at elementary. It's just when that bubble hits, when you get to the content grade levels. All right, thank you.
Dr. Cleveland, Leanne, I get the great privilege of letting you all know that this Saturday is the Springdale Public Schools Education Foundation Eighth Annual Duck Race. It will be from 10 to noon at Turnbow Park in downtown Springdale. They will drop 5,200 ducks into Spring Creek. There will be 10 winners of $1,000 each. So whichever ones go across, those schools will get $1,000 grants. We will have the George Junior High Band, and it will be livestreamed by J.O. Kelly. Interesting side note, this is the seventh year that J.O. Kelly has livestreamed the duck race. And Ms. Abigail Farrell shared with me a couple days ago that the very first host, seven years ago, is now a declared broadcast major at the University of Arkansas and wants to pursue this as a career. So I said, "That's great, we should bring her back for the Ninth Annual Duck Race, and maybe she can co-host with us." So thank you, I hope we see you all out there. Do you have any questions? Okay, all right, let there be ducks.
I've got a construction update. So Harbor, the multipurpose field, the rain last week put us behind, so that's what it looked like yesterday. And this morning, they started pouring concrete at about 3:30. And so they'll finish that, they're going to start the concrete again in the morning at 3:30, and they'll finish that concrete tomorrow. And then they'll start putting on the padding and the, and the turf. So also, another job we've done is at George Elementary, we did an HVAC upgrade over there, and it is 100% complete. We got all the punch list items completed. I did process the final payout today, and we had a little over $36,000 in savings on that job. That'll come back to, to us.
Nice.
We're still working on Westwood and Jones Designs. And then, so we're also working at Harbor and Springdale High to do some covered areas over the band bleachers. So this is what Harbor could look like. We've still got to do estimating and, and cost analysis on these projects, but, so this would be on the north end of, of the football field, and it would cover the existing bleachers. And then there's a locker room that would be underneath this building.
Can I mimic a hospitality room?
Yeah, we'd have a ticket booth, team store, hospitality suite overlooking the field, a lot like Springdale's is. At Springdale High, we would just, we would cover the existing band bleachers there. So like I said, we still have a lot to go on estimating on these projects. If we can get everything lined up, we would, I mean, we would like to start it in January since football's over.
Awesome.
Yep. Yep, and these are just what they could look like, so we'll be modifying those as we start getting estimates in. At the PDC, we're 100% complete there, and then at the Industrial Arts, we're about 90% complete. We've got to finish up, my crew will finish up the polishing the floors this weekend. The contractor, well, the teachers that are there have placed all the equipment on the shop floor, so the contractor's coming back in and wiring those in to the power. We're still working on some signage with Kelly Williamson, and then just a few roof and awnings to finish up over there, and that'll be complete. And then Southern Brothers did a, a video at the PDC. I brought that. But we have had a lot of interest on rental at, at the PDC, so we're trying to get all that completed on the Silatron.
You did a good job on that project, Jim.
It turned out pretty good.
That was awesome. Your fifth did a great job too, for straightening it all.
Yep.
She and her old, great little team. Did he come in on budget? He pushed me hard in a lot of areas. He looks awesome.
Yep. Do you guys have any questions on any construction? Okay, all right, thanks.
Wait, before you leave, will you have some reference with the chair? Would you say on Westwood, what has to happen?
I will. So Westwood, we, we've got the drawings pretty much completed. We're putting in the, today, we picked all the plumbing fixtures. We've got the heat and air systems picked out, which style system will go in, so they're putting that all into the Revit system, making sure everything lines up, you know, in all the, just all the drawings throughout the whole set. So we're getting really close to being able to submit that to the City Planning Commission and the City Council for their approvals, and then it'll go to the state, and hopefully we'll be able to break ground probably about the second week in November at, at Westwood. But I will, I'll, next month, I'll put some, we've got some renderings of what it could look like, and the, an overall floor plan of both, both floors.
Make sure, what has, final look at that?
Mm-hmm. Overall proof. Yeah, yeah, once they get the HVAC systems put in, we can make sure we've got the, the minimum square footages in every room, and then I'll be able to, to present that for, for the final approval, and we can get it to the Planning Commission. All right, thanks.
Good evening, School Board and Dr. Cleveland. My name is Valerie Hanna. I am the president of the Springdale Education Association and also a teacher at Springdale. It has been a positive start to the school year, and I'd like to share a couple of updates. In the past week, myself, Ms. Day, and Ms. Watts, who is an instructional assistant at SHS, traveled down to Little Rock for our committee day. We are thrilled to share that Ms. Watts was nominated as Springdale's Educational Support Professional of the Year, and has been submitted for consideration to the state, and we will find out in November whether or not she will be selected for that honor. We are also proud of Ms. Day, that she will be presenting at a professional development session at the Arkansas Education Association Representative Assembly in, in Hot Springs this year, and with a possibility of also taking it to a national leadership conference in the spring. And we would like to thank Dr. Cleveland for supporting her in that opportunity. And it's real short and sweet tonight, because it's, we're only, we're only a couple weeks in, but as we move forward in this school year, we are looking forward to continuing to support all educators and working together to ensure that Springdale remains an outstanding place to teach and learn. Thank you.
We have no patron comment, so with that, we will move to the consent agenda. Do we have any questions about the consent agenda?
I make a motion to be approved of the consent agenda.
Second. Motion by Mrs. Cook and a second by Mr. Ramos to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Good evening, Board. Good evening, Dr. Cleveland and Leanne. The first item that I have on my section of the program is to seek approval of the 25-26 proposed budget. We had a board training last Friday and had a few of you that were able to attend. I know that it's hard to get away from your day jobs to, to come, and, but I appreciate those that came. I think we had a very good exchange. We were able to walk through the budget line by line and talk about different items, and so I just wanted to share how appreciative I am to have that time with you guys to talk about it. On the, in your board packet, you had a 24-25 fiscal year summary is the first page of the packet. That is the complete school year, including period 13 for school year 25. The summary includes funds one, two, and four, which are kind of what we consider our unrestricted or our district dollars. That's money that's coming either from our tax revenues or from state support that we get. Essentially, it's everything except for our federal dollars, which are funds, any fund that starts with the number six. I also included on that the building fund transfer that was made as we closed out the end of the year, which was a $6 million transfer from operating over into our building fund. Historically, that amount has been usually $3 to $4 million, other than during the time that we had the ESER funds and we were able to put, I believe the maximum that we transferred one year was $9 million, and that was because we were able to push some of those operating expenses over into federal funds at that time. And of course, those, those dollars have gone away. So just wanted to talk about these different funds for just a moment as to what those are. Fund one is teacher salary funds. That's going to include your gross salaries of your certified staff, as well as the dental benefit that the district provides, and some of the disability benefits. And so we are required at the end of each school year to end that Fund 1,000 group at a zero balance, and so we transfer whatever amount is needed from operating, which are your Fund Two accounts, into Fund One so that we can zero that out. Fund Two is, includes the transfer that I just discussed going into Fund One. It includes all of our classified gross salaries, benefits for both certified staff and classified staff, as well as all those other expenses that we need to operate our district. School buses, fuel, operations, electricity, all those things are included in Fund Two. Building fund is Fund Three. It's presented here just so that y'all can see the transfer that was made. Fund Four is our debt service. Included in debt service is the bond fees that we have to pay to our bonding agents, and then our interest in principal on our debt. Again, that fund is required to end in a zero balance at the end of the year, and so we just transfer whatever is needed from Fund Two to clear that account as of the end of the year. So all of that to say that we started our year with a balance of $30,336,892 as our essentially unrestricted funds, that would be what was in Fund One, Two, and Four, and we ended the year at $35,387,509, which is about $5 million more than what we started the year with. We're doing that kind of as a step down, just because of our concerns with some things that are coming up this school year, and more so, my focus is kind of hedging and kind of getting us prepared for school year 27. Dr. Cleveland talked about earlier this evening about the situation that we're in with declining enrollment. Of course, our funding for school year 26 is based on our third quarter average that was for school year 25, so we're really not seeing that decline in enrollment reflected in our funding for school year 26. But my concern is that we're going to see that for school year 27. And so I kind of wanted to hold on to a little bit more in our fund balance just in preparation of that as we move forward. And also, we've got some things that are some new costs to us, or maybe some increasing costs, as far as how the Access Act that was passed through state legislature this past year affects us on providing funding for concurrent classes, where it's also expanded the dyslexia intervention requirements, which is an unfunded mandate that we've had for several years. Also... Also, we have chosen to bring in our special education pre-K services to in-house. Previously, we utilized the services of the co-op for that and this year, we decided it was in the best interest of the district to do that ourselves. And so we do get funding from the state for that, but we've never received enough funding to cover even what we were paying the co-op. And as we strive to provide all of those services that are required in that, I have some concerns that that's going to cost us a little bit more than what we've had in the past. So all of those things rolled in together is why I wanted to carry over a little bit more than what we had in the previous year. So are there any questions on page 1? Just wanted to also let you know that you'll see on page 3 and page 4 where we talk about revenues and expenditures, those numbers kind of roll up into this first page. I tried to do this document just the same as what you're accustomed to receiving on a monthly basis, so you'll see those numbers roll forward. On page 2, I've got, again, the district dollars, Fund 1, Fund 2, and Fund 4, which is our teacher salary fund, operating, and our debt service fund. And so what I'm projecting, and we'll talk about it just a little bit more as we get into the subsequent pages, but I'm projecting that we would have an ending balance of a little over $40 million, well, actually just shy of $41 million. And this is based on our projected tax collections. We had increasing assessments this year. It hovered a little around 9% and so it didn't put us into the point where we had to look at a rollback of our millage rate, but we still did get the benefit of that gain. So I would like to direct you now to page 3, which is where I have summarized the potential revenue for the year, what we've calculated as our tax revenue, or our operating revenues for the year. The first part of the segment talks about our property taxes. As I've stated, our assessments increased a little over 9%. We're guaranteed 98% of the collections on our first 25 mills by the state. What we're not guaranteed is collection of our debt service mills, which is 14.8 mills. So historically, we've, our collection rate has been at about 26%. I did my budget based on the collection rate of 95%, so I lowballed it just a little bit. Another option on our miscellaneous revenue sources, typically we end up with about $2 million or more is what we generally collect in school year 26, I mean 25. You'll see that it was about $2.6 million. I've tried to budget revenues low and expenditures high to kind of be sure we meet in the middle. And so I've only budgeted about $1.4 million for local revenues. I think it will be higher, but just to be conservative, that's where I said that. Some of these different revenue streams are just simply based on previous years, like National Board stipends, for instance, it's just a flow-through. The state tells us how much that is, they send us that money, we pay that out. So I base that on previous year. Residential treatment, I've based that on previous years as well. Pretty much everything else, we have gotten some sort of notification as to what that amount will be for this school year, either via state aid notice or some other notification from the state. One thing that we have not received so far this year is our ELL budget. So on this presentation, I've simply presented what we received last year. You'll notice that our grants and aid from the state is significantly less. That is because we have not received notification for some things as yet and so I've only presented the items that we know for sure what those amounts are going to be. There's some things that we received last year. For instance, we've received some teacher equalization funding. It was about $875,000. This was not a guarantee that we will receive again this year. This was just a few schools that received it that were already over the $50,000 prior to the Learns Act. And so when they did the Learns Act funding for teacher equalization, we did not get to participate because we were already over the $50,000. We did get $2,000 per teacher, but we didn't get any beyond that. Whereas some smaller districts might have been at teacher salaries of like $36,000 and they got the benefit of that additional 14 per teacher. We did not get that kind of funding. So last year, they gave us some one-time funding of $875,000. We haven't gotten any notification as to whether or not we'll receive that this year, so I did not budget that as potential revenue. Another item that we received last year was the school safety grant. We got $1.1 million, a little over. We have not received any notification as to whether that's going to be available this year. A professional learning grant was over $700,000, again, no notification. So I tried to be very conservative with what I thought our revenue amounts would be. If I could direct you to page 4, that's the summary of our expenditures and our budgeted expenditures. It includes what our actual, for the full calendar year, our fiscal year of '25, what those actual expenditures were, and then also our budgeted expenditures. You'll notice that Fund 1, we have a slight decrease budgeted as far as a comparison between budgeted expenditures for certified salaries for '26 versus what we actually spent in '25. '25, excuse me, I ran out of air for a minute. That has to do with some of the staffing efficiencies that Dr. Smith and her team have really worked hard on this last two years, that we're kind of seeing a culmination of that in this school year. Regular operating fund, I've budgeted about 5.5% higher than what we spent last year. And if you look at, if you look at what our state foundation funding amounts increased from $7,771 for school year '25 to $8,162 in the current school year, it's about 5%. So we feel like that's a good number to work with. On page 5, I have listed out all of the federal funds that we will be receiving this year and comparing that to what was available in school year '25. You'll note that it's about a 6% increase, but it's a little bit misleading on that because most of our increase is attributable to the expansion of our after-school programs, our 21cclc programs. And then also, we did see an increase in the funding for special education. So when you look at exactly our Title 1 or our Title Fund comparisons, looking at like Title 1, Title 2, Title 4, all those different ones, it was about a 5.8% decrease, about $455,000 is what we have been notified so far that we will receive in less funding from federal for Title Funds. I also wanted to note that even though we are getting more, about $315,000, $316,000 more in special education funds from federal, we're still, the school district from local dollars, we have to meet minimum requirements as to what we spend from local money for special education services. And so that has been, remained steady at about $19 million. So when you look at that, I just wanted to point that out because as you can see, and I know Dr. Cleveland has mentioned this many times that I've heard him speak, is that at a federal level, we're seriously underfunded for special education needs. So I just wanted to point that out to the board. On the food service summary, I just did a budgeted revenue projection to our actual paid meals is slightly reduced. And the reason why I budgeted it that way is because this year, as you know, we'll have free breakfast that'll be available for all students. So that means that we'll have fewer paid meals because we'll see that shift and we'll get that state funding. So you'll see the correlation that my state funding aid that I expect to get for food service has increased significantly. I think that we'll see a greater participation of our students in the breakfast program, so I feel confident that we'll see that increase. I held federal aid relatively steady. I know that as we see more students that are eligible for our free and reduced with all the work that Mr. Donnell and his team has done, we should actually see probably an increase in federal funding reimbursements because we'll have more students that will be eligible for that. On the very last page, I provided just a summary of our building fund for school year '25. And we started the year with $47,818,000. Of course, part of that was some of our bond proceeds that we had where we were finishing out those projects like Southwest Junior High and Central Junior High. Like I said previously, we were able to transfer $6 million out of operating funds. And so our beginning balance that we'll start the year with in our building fund is $44,948,131. So are there any questions? I probably should have stopped along the way on those different pages if there were any questions and my apologies for not doing that.
I'll make a motion to approve the budget as presented.
A motion by Mr. Hutchinson and a second by Mr. Bell to approve the 25-26 proposed budget. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you. The next item that I have is to seek Board approval of the August 24-25 financial statements. It, you know, it's hard to tell exactly where you're going to land at the end of the year right now, but the budgeted revenue that is in the column on this report now matches what, it matches the budget that you just approved. So this will start the reset of the clock for this school year. We're pretty well on target with our percentage collection of revenues to date. There's been a little bit of a time lag on receiving some of the revenue from the state and so I think that accounts for that little bit of difference when you look at the 12.4% versus the 11.59, but it will catch up as the state starts processing that information for us. Expenditures look pretty well on target for where I would expect us to be. Of course, debt service fund, we won't have any payments out of that for a couple of months. So are there any questions on the August financials?
Make a motion to approve the August 20-25 financials.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Ramos and a second by Mrs. Cook to approve August 20-25 financial statement. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
The very last item that I have that was in your packet was to consider a resolution to approve a related party transaction. We have a teacher, Ms. Black, whose husband owns a 10% interest in Westwood Gardens. This is a kind of a new, we've done business with Westwood Gardens for a number of years. They're a big supporter of our FFA Mums Project, but apparently this is a family-owned business and kind of as their succession planning in the, in recent months, they have, I guess, gifted, I don't know what that process was on their side, but anyway, Ms. Black's husband now owns a 10% interest in Westwood Gardens. And so I presented this to seek approval for us to continue to do business with that, with them as a related party.
Make a motion to approve the related party transaction. Question, Gordon?
A motion by Mr. Hutchinson and a second by Mrs. Creek to approve the related party transaction for Dale Black and Westwood Gardens. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you, thank you Board, appreciate it.
Do you have any questions about miscellaneous committee reports? Silence. Any other questions, comments? That meeting is adjourned.